All right, it is six o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Angie Wolf, Cindy Beiting,
Here.
Mary Beshal,
Here.
James Cartman,
Here.
Art Stotts,
Here.
Matt Crowe.
Thank you. I approve the full sequence from the floor.
The allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Great. Do I have an approval or do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's on my question.
Thanks. Any questions or changes needed? Not hearing any. Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well.
Real quick, sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
We're trying to use closed captioning on Zoom.
Ooh.
So we are supposed to be using
Oh, okay.
closed captioning ADA.
Okay.
So we're trying to use it. So I say that to please speak up and do the best you can because it's taking our voice and then trying to put it into speech. And then avoid sidebar conversations as much as possible because they make you picked up and transcribed as well.
Right.
So before we got too deep, I just wanted to give that heads up
Yes.
that we are trying to use closed captioning for the board meeting. Something that we recently learned. We're supposed to be doing for board meetings if you utilize Zoom. We're supposed to be closed captioning. So we're trying.
Here we go. I don't believe we have anybody on. Nope. Okay. All right, let me move on then to do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of October 24th, 2022?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or changes that need to be done? Not hearing any. Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I will say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll approvals and dispersments as they've been presented? Tell me the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or changes?
Lots of Amazon purchases.
Lots of Amazon, yeah. Good old school supplies. All right. Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I will say yes as well.
Sorry, I have a question even though we just approved it, but I'm asking it. About the H U D L subscription?
That's
Agile Sports Technologies?
Because that's the HLL cam for?
Oh, is it the camera?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't recognize the
Yep, it's a software to go with it as well, so.
And that was the annual
Correct.
cost for the, yeah, okay.
All right. I have nothing really at this point, so we'll just keep moving on so we can keep on point. Jordan, you on there?
Yeah, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the administrative reports that are attached to Agenda Item 4.2. If not, really one of our focal points tonight is Dale's report under 5.1 of your curriculum. So I guess before we just move on to that, does anyone have any questions or clarifying comments regarding administrative reports? And then I guess admin, is there anything that you wanted to make sure you pointed out verbally as well? Simon, Spines, no?
I think that's good.
Well, I just wanted to say the Veterans Day presentation was very, very nice. It was very well attended and I just, I thought it was a good event, so thank you for that.
Appreciate that. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. Actually, in our shared leadership team meeting today, one of our teachers gave a little shout out to Ms. Remberg and the rest of that team as well. So we gave her some kudos at shared leadership and shared positive feedback with them. We've received some, and even at the event itself, I had numerous people come up to me and say how much they appreciated that. So yeah. Kudos to our staff for collaborating and putting that together. And it's one of those events that on our single campus, the reality of involving third graders, high schoolers, and working together is much easier. So we're seeing some of those examples come to fruition, so that's nice as well. Thanks, James.
Good. Yeah, then we can move on to curriculum.
So before we dive right into Dale's presentation, which I was eagerly awaiting, the first piece under curriculum is a first draft of a 24-25 school calendar. As we got through the construction project and felt a little more comfortable on stating when we would start and end school, we got 23-24 done, so this is kind of just casting forward a lot of those corresponding dates. So I don't know if anyone has any questions right now regarding the 24-25 draft calendar.
Falls kind of in the same pattern as what we've been doing, so.
Yep, so you're exactly right. I mean, from here, what we plan to do is Cheryl and I have a meeting with the Federation later this week. We run it by the Federation as well. And then I guess for those of us aboard admin, this buys us about 10 days to give this a closer look again. If you have any feedback, we can either make edits or answer questions that you have. But unless there's hesitation on approving this, we plan to just bring it back at the next meeting. November, I'd like to plan ahead, get it out on our website. Do we have that calendar ready for 24-25?
I'm just gonna say, I don't know if it's a typo, but when it says teachers choose who are either January 22nd or June 11th, I'm assuming it's supposed to be the 27th because it's marked no school Friday, Monday, 22nd, January?
Yes. Good catch. Yep, makes sense. Gee, that's fine, no matter how many times this can have other people come to us
Yep.
things always come on. Thanks, Far. As I said, anything else, whether it's a title or just a question, let us know in the next couple of weeks and we'll pull this back. I give it November. Thanks to Ben and Cheryl for the two coming days. Been scrutinizing this many, many times before. Anyone else give it a second? All right, moving on then to second leg under curriculum goals and standards. Dale has put together a presentation with information regarding our assessments and then most of the information, some of the data and reports from our 21-22 DPI score report cards, which are publicly embargoed until tomorrow. And then tomorrow, that information will be released publicly and will be accessible to anyone in the general public. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dale to kind of lead us in that presentation. So Dale, floor is yours.
Lots of charts, guys. I don't know if you want to get to where you can see them or if you don't watch them, you're good. Okay, perfect. Well, it's been a while since we've just taken a broad look at all of our student data. Specifically tonight, we're going to review our recent school report cards. Focus on the district report cards, so lots of details. We'll be looking at a lot of different charts. As we scroll through the slides, really, I'm going to let the pictures and the graphs do the talking for us. The numbers kind of speak for themselves, but we're going to be looking a lot at trends and just where we've been, where we're headed. Started the presentation with just kind of a reference point. So the state, every school gets a district report card. And you can see there's lots of different indicators that are in each report card from achievement, growth, closing gaps, on track for graduation. And the ratings, just put the rating scale for your reference in there so you can kind of remember, see where we land as a district and the schools as we move forward. Starting out, just our district details. Who are we? What's our student population look like? So you can see our enrollment. This is off last year and the different categories of students. So I thought it was a good reference point for us. And we can move to the next slide, Deb. And our district report card is, of course, summary. You can see our overall score was at 77 and exceeds expectations where we're at. Now, looking at this, the priority areas, that's how it breaks it out. And we're going to look into that. So what makes up that score that at 77? So it's based on those four big categories. And across the board, they don't just want, use one year. It is a three-year, I don't want to say average, but there's a formula that plays a part in that. So you know, these numbers are based on data that goes back to the 18-19 school year. There was no tests, no state assessment in 1920. And then 2021, 21, 22. So yeah, and the calculations of the state use, it's a little different in each of the categories based on what they're looking for.
Just real quick as an example on that, just so you have context. Dale talked about the four weighting areas. Achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on track graduation. The achievement and the growth, how much weight is put on those is dependent on your percentages for free reduced lunch. For the higher levels of poverty that you have, you get more weight put on growth. And the lower the level of poverty you have, you get more emphasis put on achievement. Reason being is obviously there's a very strong statistical correlation between poverty levels and achievement. So for a school district that's high poverty, to have it be the same weight on achievement would really put them in a position where they could never have a good school report card just because of this trouble that they would have forever. So they get more points for growth, which is for context. Those aren't the same everywhere.
The other two are always 25% each, so it does vary. And you'll see the numbers are a little different even in our district. The different schools have different weight, looking at them based on their numbers. So just a big picture here overall compared to the state. Now, as an administrator and a principal, looking at this, when we get our school report cards, it's a great first glance. And so when you look at it, you go to the four categories. And ultimately, it's a comparison with the state. So you can see, you know, the scores and what, just a quick look. I know as a principal, what I always do is I look just to see, you know, where we at least at state average or above state average. And if not, then that, those areas are where we're going to take a little bit closer look. So it's a great place for us to start, just at a broad stroke, how we do in the different areas. And then we dive deeper based off of these. So I'll take them one by one. So our achievement score, 72.9. And please note, as we go through the slides, make sure you read the line above the bar graph. Just this district's score was the same or higher than 86.3% of the districts in the state. That's a great indicator as to where we're at compared to other schools. And the one thing the state has done a nice job with is it's not, that's where the formulas we, I think, are fair and are helpful, but they compare us with similar students across the state in the different categories. Whether we fall in one of the subgroups, but across the board, how do we fit and where are our schools at? Where is our school at? So please note that. Again, three-year average. So the next slide is our growth slide. Or no, is that our next slide? District report card. Here's a three-year look. Now, just pause for a minute. We're looking to, we want the purple and blue. We want more of those colors. And you can just look, bar graphs are moving forward. Couple of things to just note here. You look at our students that scored proficient in advance, 2018-19, that's pre-COVID. So if you jump to 21-22, I just want to highlight, we have more kids scoring proficient in advance now than we did prior to COVID. And that is truly, it's opposite of what the national trend is. Lots of articles right now. You hear it on the news. Achievement is falling across the board. That's not happening in our district. So we saw a little dip with our math in 2021. But you can see how we bounced back, we bounced back, we're higher now than we were pre-COVID. So this is just a really nice chart to look where we're at and where our percentage of kids are at. And that's pretty powerful because that's opposite of what most districts are seeing across the nation. And it's reassuring that our kids are doing well there. Here's the growth chart. So growth, really, measures changes in performance over time. That's what they're looking at here. So looking a little closer, not only growth over time, but the pace of improvement compared to similar students across the state. So they're comparing similar students in the different categories. There's another category here about adding added growth model, which does play a role. So they look specifically at the different subgroups, the economically disadvantaged, the disability status, race, other target groups, and there's a calculation in there. But to highlight for us, you know, we're in the 92nd, 92nd percentile in the state. That's a nice number. Our kids are showing great growth. Target group, who is the target group? Really, they take the students that scored in the bottom 25th percentile the year before. So on the state assessments, that's the targeted group. So that could be students in some of the subgroups with disability status, economic, economically disadvantaged, or it could be just any student that where their scores are lower is targeted group. So it's not just based on test performance. There's other factors that play in there, their growth, their attendance factors in with how they get categorized in that target group. This is an area for us, and really, a couple of years ago, we kind of honed in on this. You heard us talk about our vulnerable students. Typically, these are our vulnerable kids, kids that we want to see growth, kids that are most in need, and this really helps us with our school improvement planning. We pay attention to this group and we try to find solutions to help this population of students right off the bat. So. The graduation rates, let me click to that one. To the next, go on. On track to graduation. You can see where we score there, the eighth percentile. The next slide breaks this down a little bit better for us. And you can see when you're talking graduation, they look at four areas. Absence, absenteeism, on track to graduation. Interesting, the third grade English Language Arts score is part of this and the eighth grade math score is part of this. Really, research out there has indicated those are, those are just two indicators. If students do well there, they're more likely going to do well in high school and towards graduation. So that's why those two are factored in there. Let's look at our schools. I know we're just curious, how does this all break down? So I'll start with the elementary school. Overall score, 75.2. Exceeds expectations. You can see the overall scores here. Overall high achievement with respect. Again, pause and just look at the, so from the administrative standpoint, broad strokes. You can see our achievement at the elementary level, very high compared to the state. Our growth, you know, that's an area that, you know, we'd like to see better numbers there. So, you know, looking closer at the data, we can see why that number is a little lower than we'd like it to be. And we try to find solutions for that. Targeted group and then on track for graduation, those are solid there as well. Our middle school, again, the category exceeds expectations. Overall, compared to the state, you can look at the numbers. Math score, I highlighted that earlier. Our math score dipped a little bit last year. Growth bumps back a little bit at the middle school level. Still an area we're paying attention to. High school report card. 85.4, I think maybe the highest number since I've been here, you know, for any of our schools. So and we'll see why when we click. High across the board. And when you're showing high achievement, high growth, one of the numbers that jumps out at us is, you know, we just looked at our middle school and the math growth, growth. That 100% number. Jordan and I were on a Zoom call with Ed Elizabeth last week, just looking at her data. And it's like, I've never seen that number before.
They work with CISA too with their consultants. Ed works with schools throughout the state and report card interpretation, both the data evidence for districts. So it's not like some little pop shop where they look at a couple of report cards. Ed is one of the most respected people in the state when it comes to score and report cards. So Ed told us that he's never seen 100 before. That was a celebration.
Yeah.
One of the things I appreciate with Ed Elizabeth, they tell us, like it is too. So they're not afraid to point out other areas. So that's a significant number, significant. This report card itself, it's worth celebrating. So just our trends, where are we at over the course of time? You can see the zero in the middle there. So looking at the numbers, this goes back to 2016-17 school year. So the three bars on the left, and then we had COVID, no testing. And the state that year actually adjusted the state report card too. So there was a change in just how they scored. But, and so the last two years, you can see that, and look at where the trend is. It's up across the board and just looking, you know, how we scored compared to earlier years. Again, going to this to grade on a national scale, our school is on track and doing some nice things. So you can see where the numbers there. Kind of fun to look at that. So next year, I'm going to do this presentation. I'll throw those other ones out and we'll just, we'll start with the last three years. And we'll move forward from there because that's a, that's a better comparison. But it's nice to see where we were prior to COVID. The next series of charts and graphs, I'll kind of let the numbers, you know, things that we really look at from the administrative standpoint and our teachers, looking at our English Language Arts and our math scores. We'll start at the elementary level and you can just see a five-year trend where we've been at the elementary school, grade three, four, and five. We're in the blue and the state is in the red. And I remember back in 1718, you can see where we were at as a school. And we had some tough conversations then and our school movement process and getting more specific with our strategies, what we're doing in the classroom. You can see the trend is a nice incline here. Go to the next one, Deb. Middle school, across the state, COVID hit middle schoolers hard, just that age group. You can see where our numbers are there, consistently above the state average. Getting that math score, we dipped back last year, but we came, or the year before, made a nice comeback and getting back on track. And we're doing some math work currently this school year. Actually, we have a math consultant coming in tomorrow going to spend some time in our middle school classrooms and our elementary classrooms. So that is an area that we're, we are focused on. Look to see improvement there. This will be our ninth and 10th graders. This is the Aspire, former state assessment. This, we won't take that this year, so we adjusted that. But this is where we are. You can see where our high school is currently at and where they've been. Again, well above the state average and we move forward. Some of these graphs are pretty to look at when we see that line where they're at. Here's our ACT. Put two charts. This is, both these graphs are our English Language Arts and number of students that scored proficient in advance. So the severe juniors is on the left-hand side. And then just that score, that 21 or that 20.2 or whatever the number that we're always looking for on an ACT, that's the chart on the right. So that's the number you're probably more familiar with. But it does split it out a little bit. We can see, you know, consistently above the state average for juniors. The math numbers are on the next slide. Again, consistent, consistently above the state average with the trend upwards the last three years. So just some highlights as a district. Achievement in the 86th percentile this date. Love to look at the year 2021, they're in the 84th percentile the year before. So pretty consistent there. Our growth made a nice jump there this past school year as a district. Just highlight the high school, their overall rating, 85.4. They scored high the year before. So they've had two years of just great data. Achievement, 91st percentile. They were the 87th percentile the year before. But even their growth, you know, that 98th percentile this past school year is an impressive number. But it was impressive in 2021 as well. So they've been consistent and getting better here. And just in general, overall rating is up as a district. The different priority areas, when we count those, we're up in three and four, three out of the four instances. Growth is up, three out of the four, and 10 out of the 12 metrics have improved since the year before. Just pause. So that's our state assessments. What else do we look at? Wanted to just highlight Jordan to ask me to just talk a little bit about our district assessments and other things that we do. We made some changes this fall. We moved to a, you know, nationally, these are nationally normed tests. But our kindergarten through seventh grade with a target group in eighth grade all take the IREDDI diagnostic test. That's both the reading and math. And we'll take that three times this year, so we'll take it in the fall, mid-year, and then in the spring. And fall pre-ACT, we have our eighth, ninth, and 10th graders take that test in the fall. Liz gets those results and then she goes into the classrooms and she meets with the students. They get their individual reports and she talks to each of them as to how they can improve, where they're at. And then we use that data as a staff to make any adjustments or changes needed. We can see how we use it, particularly at the elementary level. If we have individual students that need interventions, we use the state to help guide that. Classroom teachers, if see certain areas that need to improve in a classroom, they can adjust their strategies that they're using with our universal instruction. We determine goals, not only for our students, individual students, the grade level teams, subject areas, they'll set goals where they want to make some improvements throughout the school year. These tests can help us measure that, obviously, just monitoring student progress. And then, you know, other gaps in our curriculum. So, you know, when we look at the data, if there's gaps where we're not teaching or we're not covering certain topics at certain times of the year or certain grade levels or what they should, we can catch those. And so aligning our universal instruction across the board has been a big, big part of the process as well. I'll just finish too. I just, you know, these universal screeners. A lot of that, that's the behind the scenes work that the public doesn't always see. Parents don't always see that, but we do a great job of just tracking student progress, monitoring our kids, our PLC work, it's really instrumental in helping us make improvements. So, you know, we use other assessments and other points of data, so it's not one test. We don't make decisions based on that. Our teams have grade level assessments that they use, so it's a combination of things. But we are using their, the results on those assessments to help guide us in the decisions that we make, not only on a day-to-day basis in the classroom, but even big curriculum decisions that we make, you know, moving forward with our materials and our essential standards. So really, the reason to celebrate overall, we're achieving at a high level. Not only at the state level, but just look closer. And Dade County, really high performing county in the state. And, you know, we're at the top, top of the county in a number of grade levels and a number of those subject areas across the board. And that, that's something for us to be proud of. And that, that's something for us to be proud of, not only this year, but last year as well. Our, our kids are showing that they're learning what they need to learn and moving forward. So it's really a credit to our students, our parents, of course, our staff, our admin. And one of the things I admire about, particularly about the admin team, always trying to get better. We know, you know, it's easy to celebrate and, you know, pat ourselves on the back, but we, we find areas to get better. And the team, the admin team and our teachers, they're not afraid to talk about that. And the thing I really admire is we don't just talk about it, we find solutions. And we try to put our kids in positions where they can, they can achieve at a higher level. So I, I do appreciate that. Any questions for me or any of our admin team?
So the Almonte School just took on a new math curriculum, correct?
Yes.
And how, where's your opinion of that going good?
Simplifiers, yes. Going really well, it's, it's different. There's a, there's a, there's a lot of prep work for our teachers, just getting the materials organized, getting it structured. But understanding the concepts of math, I, I hear positive comments from our staff in regards to that. Our CISA consultant that's come in, he's been in twice so far. He's observed all the teachers, he's met with all the grade level teams, so they've had opportunities. And he's very familiar with Bridges, and that's why, part of the big reason, he, he just knows the program really well. He helped us get it set up. So he'll be with us throughout the school year, so it's a, it's a year-long process of, so they'll learn a lot this school year, but we have high hopes that Bridges is going to.
I'm just curious about, I mean, three years from now, we look at our scores, how much of a difference will that make? It's interesting.
Well, so you put that on T for me. If you look at our math scores at the high school level, three years ago, four years ago, there was a conversation once, our high school math staff with Liz and Dale about making adjustments to our math curriculum. I remember at that time we shifted away from kind of your traditional Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry, that sequence that most of us either endured or thrived in in our younger years. We shifted to kind of a Math 1, 2, 3 format and aligned our curriculum very closely to the college and career readiness standards. If you look at the math growth that we've now seen at the high school level in the course of the last three years, that is definitely a celebration, something, it's not always the curriculum, I'm not suggesting that. But I think when the implementation is done well, when you invest in the staff development and get your people to believe in it, then the curriculum can be incredibly successful. And that's what we're seeing at the high school level right now with our math is that, I mean, those numbers have just continued to go up. And then, yes, the comment of never seeing a hundred percent in terms of growth, that's not an accident. That's, that's good people using good resources. So we're seeing that success, so yes, to your point, that's absolutely what we always want to see, is good implementation, a good adoption. And then supporting our staff members, I mean, that's the number one thing. You don't just buy a resource and throw it at them and say, go have fun. It's like, no, what are you doing to try to help them be better and understand how they can use it to improve their practice and then kids' results?
Curriculum week, we started that four years ago, really COVID threw a wrench at it. You know, one or two summers in there with the, you know, math adoption. And we had 30 teachers here for a week. And three different trainers came in, spent time to get the elementary level, helping us plan for this coming school year. And then we built them that profession along the way throughout the school year for them. As they had an opportunity to teach the program, see how the students responded, so we can respond with them along the way.
Any other questions for Dale or anybody else?
Great work.
Yeah, so it's a high bar.
So. Yeah, I mean, so a few things to that end to kind of summarize. I mean, number one, like as a district, we should be incredibly proud, like I will be the law. I am. This is, this is phenomenal. And you talk about being in the business of like learning. When you look at the metrics, look at the information that points to that, I mean, this would tell you that the system of learning is, is very healthy. For us to be achieving as a district, in the top 14%, have growth in the top 7% of all districts in the state of Wisconsin. And yes, some of those other numbers that you saw that were even higher, I mean, that's, that's where you want to be. The sweet spot is high growth, high achievement. If you could check both of those boxes, then, then the system is pretty healthy. And I think that's really a testament to having a plan and then sticking to it. And we've talked about the continuous improvement work, the school improvement planning. And we have not wavered for six summers in that work. And that's, that's a testament to you being willing to support those things financially and with resources. And then to our admin and the leadership that they provide, to their staff and their ability to lead, because it's not easy to be a true instructional leader. Now, principals are instructional leaders, that's hard. And then a credit to our staff for kind of buying in and being willing to do it. So we certainly, once this is not embargoed tomorrow, want to capitalize on the opportunity to help people understand some of the good things that are happening in this district, like did you know? We have growth, it's in the top 7% of all districts in the state of Wisconsin. So we will be doing some communicating, social media and other ways just to kind of get the word out because these are things that people should know and should celebrate and be proud of. And we are planning to do a little something as we look forward to Thanksgiving next week, to express our gratitude to our staff next week as well. Because we know without good teachers, good support staff, none of this would be possible. So this is definitely a celebration, something we should be proud of, so kudos to everyone because it's a team member.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's definitely a team effort, it takes energy and it takes the skill and it definitely happens.
I think it's a sad reality too, when you look at, we're 10, 15, 20 points above the average.
Yeah.
Knowing that, you know, how many schools are really struggling. So it's obviously something to celebrate and kudos to everybody, but knowing very well that it's a sad state, you know, for a lot of people out there. Just setting, again, it needs to, setting the bar really high in the areas of growth, obviously, when your expectations are at least high. I was curious, do they divide out the ratings by school size when it's all said and done?
No.
Oh, okay.
So when they compare your.
It'd just be curious, like especially Dayton County.
Initially, they compare your scores to schools with similar demographics. But then at that big picture, where it's presented like this, yes, I mean, as a district, for us to be in the 93rd percentile for academic growth, there's 422 districts in the state or 421 depending on the year. So I mean, that's saying around 30 districts in the state of Wisconsin for academic growth. Like the high school, yeah, there's 520 something. So 98th percentile, which is in the top 10 high schools in the state of Wisconsin for academic growth.
It's very impressive to put it that way because, you know, you think of all of those big schools out there that you think have so many more opportunities and advancement that, you know, people think that they have. But we are above that and we have the results to show that. And it's just really need to give us those.
I guess that's why. Pre-K and summer school and all these other things that haven't even made an impact in that yet.
Right.
But will.
Right.
And it was always like the stigma of like the small rural school.
Right.
It would be interesting to see out of the 30 top, you know, schools, how the, the school population compares.
Yeah, no, and I mean Dale mentioned the Dayton County thing, so a couple of weeks ago, when the DPI released the state testing results from 21, 22, and Madison.com ran the article. And the article said that the two highest, two highest performance districts in Dayton County were Middleton, Cross Plains, and Wisconsin Heights. And Dayton County is not really a microcosm of the state of Wisconsin in terms of socioeconomic resources. I mean, it's pretty much the most affluent covenant state. And we're right there at the top and certainly outlier in terms of size and resources. So that just goes back to, yeah, the system is healthy and there's really good people working really hard to do what's best for kids.
Truly a team effort.
Yeah.
Part of it will say, you know, the larger schools, they have different, they have more subgroups. Because we don't have the numbers and you have to have at least 20 students in each subgroup. So the adult population, there's some other subgroups, and some of the larger districts would have more of those. So that factors into their formula.
Right.
With their numbers, so, so there are some differences there.
But. Then I think the last piece is like, when does this work stop? And the answer is never. The goal is is we continue to try to, it doesn't mean we have to do everything differently. But we continue to focus on trying to be better every year. And it's that notion of like our kids, not mine personally, but like our district's kids are our kids. You never know when an opportunity for a student that we either do or do not provide, change the trajectory of their life. I think that's part of what makes us successful is our staff takes that very seriously.
It'll be interesting in the next couple of years too, because some of the numbers that we haven't, we don't know quite yet, are those, those youngest students that were impacted, 4K kindergarten, first grade for COVID. And they missed some of that, so we're, you know, working hard at that level. But that's going to be true across the state. So we're curious just to see where we start with the third graders and moving forward. So there's going to be some work to do there, but all, all this is going to come soon. See.
Thanks Dale, any others?
Thank you.
More to follow.
Yeah, very exciting. Policy?
Yeah, well, the timing on this seemed to trouble me. So the policy is linked in, in Word docs, I'm sure you've taken a look at it. I'm confident you've seen it before as well. But just knowing as we were leading up to this presentation, to the information that Dale shared tonight. I mean, this, as I mentioned in my notes to the board, this has been in place at least prior to my time. I think served us well is serving us well. But at the same time, I thought it was important for, for the board and even us administratively and potentially our staff, is to kind of take a look at this and reflect on this. And are these things that pretty much all of us inherited, are they still meaningful? Are they relevant? Or do they need, do they need another look? What exactly that looks like? I think that's a, that's a course that we would chart together and collaboratively talk about. How are we best to go about giving this a fresh look and then going through the process of collaboratively building an updated mission, vision, values, and goals? But at the very least, I wanted to bring it up because I was looking through some other policy items pretty carefully recently. And this was just one that the timing to me could not have been better to kind of put this out there and say, does this have meaning, is this relevant? And if it is, that's fine, I'm not suggesting something to the matter with it. But if it's not, then, then that's okay too. And then we can start the process of putting together a plan to update this policy, like we've updated many policies. This one is obviously incredibly important because if you're saying something is your mission, vision, and priorities, well then your actions should align, your resources should align, how you spend your time, money, energy should align. So thoughts?
Do you guys feel that what we have right now is relevant? Do you feel that it needs a look at, revisions, refreshing, refreshing, not necessarily revision, but give it some new life? I mean, is that something that we'd like to do as a board and take on? And, you know, even if it's just a couple tweets, you know, it's not that we have to start all over.
I think I mentioned to Cindy that I remember soon after I got on, there was a little discussion about revising it and looking at it. But I think with good intention and failed execution, it was just too overwhelming and we didn't really enter into it knowing the, the commitment and the time commitment and the collaboration necessary to really do a dive in. It's not just like a time to bring out the thesaurus and make it pretty or, you know, so I think, I think it's a good conversation to have. I think even on an annual basis for the board to kind of look at achievements in the year. How does it, you know, new things on our plate for the following year, how does it go back? I think that's a good conversation that we have, whether it's at one of our workshops or retreats, whether we just make that an annual thing, I think that's good. But I think, I think it's time and I don't think this group has ever had that conversation. And so it would be good just to do an in-depth read of it for starters and then maybe go from there. But I think understanding that if it is an overhaul, it is an intentional commitment to like dive in fully and wholeheartedly with the whole team of why are, why are we here and what do we do? Not just a glamorous PR maneuver of, you know, words.
Seems like a good workshop too. It definitely would be, yes. Is that something that you guys are willing to look at and want to tackle and? Sure, well, with that enthusiasm, I do think that that will, you know, certainly add that to our next board workshop agenda. And we'll certainly look at that, so.
I think to Barb's point, and I just say this because I've been a part of this exercise, if you will, in multiple other places. The, yeah, the biggest thing is it needs to mean something. Because if you're going to go through the time to actually look at it, and then, I mean, ideally, this shouldn't just be the board. The board is one critical player for sure, but I mean, this, this is a staff thing too. Because they're the ones that are going to have to execute most of these things and who actually live it on a day-to-day basis. So I mean, this will be a collaborative venture that involves multiple groups. But if we're going to go through that time and effort and energy, it's kind of like I've said about surveys, like don't put out a survey if you don't want to look at the results or you don't want to change anything. So we're going to go through this, and we need to go through and understand that it has meaning, it's important. And we need to value beyond the process and then what ultimately it comes to, well, then that, yes, that should be driving our direction. And something that we look back on as we make decisions, like is this supporting what it is we say we're about? So that's probably why at some point someone said, oh, dear board, this is a lot of undertaking. Because it's where you realize that this is more than just words on paper, if you do it right. So yeah, that certainly could be a workshop topic and then something that we work together to then work with the staff and build this together. All right, thank you for the feedback.
Sounds like a good workshop thing. And I, I know what Jordan just said, I think that you don't want to just be in the exercise of moving words around. You know, you want this, your creed or code or whatnot.
You have to do it. Alrighty, well, that was our last focal point. We then can move on to our district assessments of school safety drills. Do I have a motion to approve this school, this? To approve the school or review of school safety drills? That, that's word is very odd, but yes, we're, so they have to do the school safety drills. We need to then approve them and do I have a motion to.
So, second.
Did you want to say anything? I heard it went very, very well.
Yeah, I mean, shout out once again, staff, communication, working with each other with law enforcement. Shout out to the sheriff's department, that's a partnership that's incredibly valuable in the district as well. We had, how many sheriff's deputies did we have here? Now deputies were here to kind of support that endeavor, offer feedback, monitor what we were doing. And overwhelmingly, yes, their feedback was, was very positive in terms of the way it was handled. I personally was out on the south end of the building, observing students exiting the building. And just, the kids took it seriously. The staff took it seriously. We were outside for 10 to 15-ish minutes. It was not a 70-degree day. It wasn't 20 either, but it was not warm. And as a teacher educator, you know those moments can get squirrely really quick. And our kids handled it well. They stood by their teachers. They walked back into the building in orderly fashion. They were respectful. I was very proud of the way our kids and staff handled it as well. As a father of three, my kids came home and talked about it, asked questions. They shared what their teachers told them about it. And just, I thought, you guys did a good job of front voting for our, our staff and kids. So, and yes, the, the feedback from law enforcement was good as well. We always learn things. And this is definitely something that we understand you can never be too prepared for things like this. And we don't think we have all the answers. But we're trying to handle these situations in the best way possible. But help people understand that not only is this a school skill, this is kind of a life skill at this point. You're going to be out in public. These are things that you need to be aware of. So, anything else?
Any other questions? All right, move on. And, uh, Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed courses for 23, 24 school year?
Second.
Thanks, guys. Any questions on these or any comments from the schools?
Can, can the online courses be taken during summer or off?
They could. The pre-professional education courses could be taken during summer. They do offer them. That would be the only online one that we have. Yeah. And that runs also through early college credit. Through early college credit, wondering if students can take college level courses during school year, the traditional school year, or they can take summer courses.
Any other questions? All right, Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the, approve cheer as a co, a new co-curricular? Does anyone have any questions or any comments?
Kendra, do you want to, any sort of verbal synopsis? For our visitors, perhaps?
You were very thorough in your write-up.
I assume you come just for the festivities of the report card.
I was very thorough thanks to their three expertise. So I was not a cheerperson. But it was brought forth. It was something of interest for our kids. And we put out the survey and it was clearly of interest. So I then reached out to staff and said,
Help?
I asked lots of silly questions and they laughed a little bit, but learned a lot. So Jamie, Jamie and Brittany both have a great deal of expertise in the cheer world. So they sat down and spent time looking at the equipment we have, what facilities do we have, what are the opportunities and connections we can make in our community? We have a lot already in terms of like, apparently our uniforms look nice. And they're called shells and, you know, something like that. And, you know, what are ways that we can use what we already have? And then what are ways that we can make it really accessible for our kids? Just the ideas that they have in order for it to be a viable program for our kids. And just giving our girls especially another option. But both genders, as well as given interest from both boys and girls to be a part of a potential program and one that, you know, runs multiple seasons. And we just continue to have our school culture and school spirit improve.
So I can't remember how much other cohorts cost for participation. Is it $1.55? Is that like high or?
That's, that's just their materials, like equipment they would need. So in terms of, to put it compared to like softball, like how much would a glove cost in cleats? So not their entrance fee.
Okay.
That would still be as same as any other one. That's just if a kid had never done it before, what's ballpark would it cost a family? So to give them the materials in the year, but then.
I think it's just cool coming off of what we were talking about, knowing that certain opportunities can have a lifelong impact. And we're constantly striving of looking for those opportunities that we may be missing that could fill cohorts, you know, expectations or opportunities. And knowing that this was a very intentional effort stemming from the survey and getting the kids involved and then needing commitment by coaching and leaders. And I, I just think it's, it just resembles, I think, everything that we hope and strive for in continuing opportunities and expansion. And that, you know, it's a team effort. We're constantly looking, you know, for different ways to open opportunities. And to know that there's so much interest and to have three very grateful participants that don't leave this. It's just, I think it's really cool, yeah.
Well, and I think it goes right along with all of our achievements that we just talked about. You know, we want to make it known of what we're doing and having that school spirit and the excitement around what we are doing with academics and athletics. There's just so much to be excited about. And I think just having this is an extra item for kids to be involved in. Just really exciting.
Is this something I plan on implementing this year or wait until next year?
This year.
This year yet?
Yep.
Okay, good.
So to that end, I guess right now, with looking for your blessing, we're looking for your blessing, is to just the establishment of a program. Obviously, they put together a lot of proposed details and kind of information. What you could expect at the next meeting is an update on other details in terms of timeline and kind of solidifying some of these other things. But in the initial conversations, the notion would be is to, yes, if we get the blessing, move forward with promotion, getting kids involved, basically signed up, and then we come back from the holiday and kind of this second half of the winter season would kind of be our, let's try to get this established and off the ground and kind of build it at that point. So, but those details we'll get to soon. We just need to make sure that this was a go-ahead before we push too hard on that.
And I've seen the numbers and interest. I think it's an easy thing to approve funding for. And we had cheerleading when I was in school. And I just think it does, it changes some of the dynamics in, in terms of school spirit and just revitalizing the, the culture and the one campus. And I think it's a really neat opportunity at this time, too.
Well, when was the last time we had cheerleading? It's been a while.
2014, I believe was last year.
2014, I believe.
Thanks, Gina. I was going to say, it's been six years. I've never seen him here.
Great. Any other questions on the plan, otherwise I think we'll, uh, Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yeah.
Matt?
I have spirit, yes.
Yes as well, thank you. That was so good. Thank you, man. Thank you. That was amazing.
Do you know the perfect cheer?
Sign this guy up or something.
That was amazing. That was very funny. Thank you guys for all your work.
Yeah, thank you.
On getting everything together. It was a lot of information. Thank you, Kendra. Thank you, guys. Really are excited to see where it goes. All right, well, we will continue on then. Just a couple of things left. District personnel, do you have a motion to combine 9-1 and 9-2?
So, second.
Great. Any questions? Thank you to Connor and Wokengen. Kind of a nice transition there. Questions, Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb? Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Uh, future meeting dates. Just a, a thought, kind of thinking towards December. The second meeting in December was going to fall on December 26th. Not always an ideal fun day to, to come to a board meeting. So we were thinking about having just one meeting on December 19th. And it kind of seemed like several people it could, but several it couldn't. So I think we might be, just need to.
I think we should just table it. And if we need a quorum for a vote, I mean, I think there'll be a majority.
Yeah.
So I think we just scratch it. And then if it's needed.
We stick with our, we stick with the second, yeah, to the second that one. We'll, we'll drop the 26th if we need one. Make sure you have one. Right. That was kind of a consensus. All right. Any other questions on any of those?
Didn't we have a date to draw up for the workshop in January?
It's on there. So the possibility of a workshop on the 30th of January, yep.
Um, and so take a look at that for your calendars. January 30th, we'd like to do the workshop. We'll finish the vision.
You need to have one agenda.
Well, we, we do. That is one. Just let me know if that's going to work for you guys. Put it on your calendar and plans, so. All right. With that then, do I have a motion to approve, uh, to approve, to adjourn?
So, second.
Great. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Matt? Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Thank you all.